Board member Anderson.
Yeah.
Board member Dunn.
Yeah.
Board member Doberton.
Yeah.
And then board member Irons is unable to attend tonight, she's excused for a work travel. We're getting that. So, and then board member Kent is here as well. Uh, please join me in the meeting. But no limits.
But they will be instituted by the United States of America. It is very important for which stands on a nation. I forgot. In the gift of liberty and justice.
Okay, we, um, we have been brought to the customary places. So we're looking to get the agenda, so.
Second, minus the student showcase.
So. It's not too much of an extent, yeah, so. So we can amend the agenda without the remove the student showcase. Yeah, same. We'll extend my motion. Who does? Please agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda by student showcase discussion. Okay, uh, all favor of approving the agenda by student showcase, say yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, so we are on to the community forum now, we're not going to explain again.
Oh, sure, yeah, the community forum is the opportunity for anyone to, uh, in the audience to talk to the board. On this board administration, this is an opportunity to dialogue back and forth. Um, it is open to any topic. So, uh, once we get the delegations to be heard, the delegation to be heard conversation. The community member, staff member would be then speaking to the board on an agenda topic. And there wouldn't be a dialogue back and forth, so. This is everyone's opportunity to, uh, in the open forum to discuss whatever it is that people would like to.
So, and again, it's the second meeting, but it's now officially part of the.
Part of the meeting.
Meetings or.
It's part of the meetings.
Right.
Now it's part of the meetings too as well.
Alright, uh, before we go to those who signed in and the board members that have the announcement sort of. Okay. Looks like we have signed up, we've been formed, uh, making call.
Yep. Just to, um, clarification on consent agenda I am today. I understand the explanation from Wasi says that if a board member has a question or objection, it'll be removed from that section of the agenda. Um, I just want to un- under see that that doesn't mean discussion for the board meeting, that means discussion will still happen in this forum for the benefit of the community.
Yeah. So, yeah, so my, my, uh, it is normal course of business with putting the consent agenda. Uh, the board member says, hey, I'd like to speak on this item, pull it out, pull it out, you know, it's a separate, uh, separate discussion point.
Thank you.
There it is.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Alright, um, that is all who, uh, signed up to speak, is there anyone else that would like to? Speak. Okay, uh, moving on to approval of the minutes from April twenty ninth, uh, open session.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes from April twenty ninth, open session. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the minutes from April twenty ninth, open session, say yes. Yes? Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Onto approval of financial report and bill listing.
Second.
Okay, about, uh. Yes. We got a motion in a second to approve financial report and bill listing, uh, any discussion? Discussion, okay, all those in favor of approving the financial report and bill listing, say yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Opposed, say no. Alright, motion carries. Alright, on to delegations to be heard. And I don't see anyone standing up to speak in delegation to be heard, anyone like to speak, delegation to be heard. Okay. It's been. Alright, to the district commissioner.
So we had one donation this evening, uh, thank you very much with PPO for donating about seventeen hundred fifty dollars and eighty nine cents for under school playground equipment as well as intermediate school dodgeballs, so. That's something we've been working with, uh, the administration and some of the playground supervisors, we see a lot of us are intermediate staff, so. Just looking for a motion to approve donations as presented. Someone?
Alright, I'll second that. Alright, so we have a motion in a second to approve donations as presented, any discussion? What was the playground equipment?
Uh, both of playground balls, we had, uh, basically different types of playground balls, some bins for the balls and then some things. For the, as far as your act, right, as well, it seems like our kids just like eat, they have a ball in their possession, it seems like we're always giving donations for.
On the world culture or something.
Well, not to.
Alright. Very good, um, so, uh, all in favor of approving donations as presented, say yes. Yes?
Yeah.
Opposed, say no. Okay. Motion carries. Uh, pre-bows. Alright, moving on to mini reports.
Uh, we got personnel actions first, well, I'm sorry, personal action, yeah, that's alright. Um, so, yeah, we have, uh, some, some resignations, uh, one resignation you'd like to present to the board from, uh, Lori Lewandowski. So, uh, this is a retirement letter, um, boring, like, I think, Lori for thirty one years of education experience, uh, all in our school district, so. An educator that will be missed, and, uh, as she said, it's starting to have student, old students, there's children are starting to come through, so, uh, we wish Lori enough with best of luck in her retirement soon to receive her, uh, retirement letter in fact at the end of this school year. Um, we do have three proposed individual teacher contracts for Evan Steiner, Brandon Schiddy, and Kaylee Fay, uh, for individual contracts that were in the board packet. And then we also have a proposed letter of appointment, uh, for Shelby Prinley, uh, for four K instructional assistant there too as well, so. Uh, we're just looking for a motion to approve the letter of resignation from Lori Lewandowski as presented. Uh, also looking for the board to make a motion to approve the proposed individual teaching contract for Evan Steiner, Brandon Schiddy, and Kaylee Fay as presented. And finally, the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve both out of appointment for Shelby Prinley.
Like, we have posted things all together, well, okay, looking for a, uh, motion to approve. Some move.
Second.
Alright, uh, we have a motion in a second to approve all personnel actions as presented, any discussion? Right, they're in the board packet, there's other letters of appointment listed.
Correct, I said different than. Those would be for reoccurring individuals who have already, the, the board has previously hired them.
Okay.
Uh, these would be for new people to the.
Very good, any other discussion? Alright, um, all those in favor of approving the personnel actions as presented, say yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Alright, so, um, we'll wind it down, and that's, uh, done with school year, so, June, uh, there we go, have our graduation and then June sixth, so. Been a really quick year. Um, and the only other piece of information would be the whole of records request, nothing really has come through outside of NAS ones that it's been over too many districts across the state of Wisconsin for. It will help, so. That's it.
Alright, moving on to committee reports.
Alright, so, we had a policy and personnel, uh, meet earlier in the month, and again, we did present the first round of five hundred policies for this last group of five hundreds, and you can see those in the packet. Um, we also, uh, for the last board meeting, uh, they did ask, the board did ask for the board to confirm the policy committee to review policy one eighty five, which was the committee, our committee policy, uh, for possible consideration for committees as a whole. Uh, the committee discussed and that one did not make it out of the committee, so, uh, the committee said, hey, it's something that we can re, we look at next year, that's something that the board wants to, uh, but we still got a lot of policy work and we continue to do some certain things and, uh, just kind of with those current structures. Well, so, um, and then we also did, again, the, uh, face coverage as health and safety measure, it did back to the committee to, to rework, uh, for possible consideration. And, uh, the committee did present, which you will see a little bit later in the meeting, did create a proposed policy that basically covers the administration in a school board not being able to, um, enact a, enact a mandate. So, truly follow local, state, and federal guidelines. That's, well, so, uh, in that, uh, policy, proposed policy would be like that, you know, a lot of people are going to do it, but basically that's. So, and then we'll be able to talk more about that later in the meeting when we would look at person really. So, committee of the whole would have to change their current policy one eighty five. Correct, yeah. Yeah. Yep. And then, uh, thank you too, we did have some staff members who did attend, or, uh, again, we did invite all of our staff members to, uh, send the policy and personnel meeting to review and discuss any of the proposed handbook revisions or anything they wanted to talk about there. So, um, and again, they, they've talked about it, there was some things that came up, there was, uh, a conversation around, uh, um, the doctor's notes and making sure that it was only for scheduled doctor's appointments and not every time you are ill. That was one part of the conversation for the staff thing, right? And then the other one was possibly having the board consider opening up, um, the four O three B plan or the four O three B opportunity where the district would, like we do for teachers, give five hundred dollars into their four O three B and match up the two hundred and fifty dollars too, so. Right now, that provision is only in the employee handbook for part two, which is our teachers. So. That brought up, and again, I know that the question was about what the cost of that was, and it was just under a few weeks, twenty six thousand, twenty eight thousand dollars. It, it would be, correct, it would be approximately six thousand, so. Yep. Alright, that's the problem, so, that, uh, was the policy and personnel, and then they will talk about the five hundred series policy, we'll talk about the employee handbook draft number one, as well as the other two policies. Not the committee as a whole, but the, uh, based on, like, one later week. Is what we're at, is at, yeah. Strategic planning, we are coming to an end, so, uh, big thank you to our team, uh, you will see obviously the mentor there, but the biggest piece that I want to kind of highlight is, uh, the review of the strategic plan, what we call a plan on a page, so, um, we have one more meeting tomorrow, actually, to, uh, review that one more time, and then ultimately recommend some of the action steps. Recommend some of the data metrics to track that progress, uh, to the administration, and then the administration will be responsible for implementing and developing all those plans year by year by year, we will keep keeping the board updated as well, so. Um, so lots of things continuing to happen there, um, the great news is, is we will have a draft for the full board to review, uh, June seventeen, and this meeting, so. We're very excited about that, and, uh, the team's on great work, and we're ready to, uh, present something hopefully to the board, and we will in June.
No policy in first draft.
Correct, that'll be a first draft, correct, yep. And then we would finalize it in July, okay?
Good. Good, alright, that's everything, Rob.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, alright, moving on to, uh, new business, the preliminary proposed budget presentation for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. There's a board, you guys wanted to come over here, I'll give a free presentation.
Sure.
Steve, come on in, the front light here, let me take a rap, there you go. Okay.
So, well, thanks everybody again for coming today, I'm gonna be presenting the preliminary budget. Our budget, it says. Um, the first piece I want to say is, is whatever we present tonight is gonna change. It is truly going to change, all of our variables, like we'll talk about, um, are basically come in September and October. Yet, we are required to begin to start spending our budget, our fiscal calendar is July first through June thirty. That's it, so, that's why, uh, we'll be asking the board here for, uh, an adoption, just so we can start spending twenty four, twenty five dollars, as we can take a look at that too, so. Um, so our agenda this evening, goals, timeline factors, project revenue, we'll have a brief explanation on what the, uh, school funding formula is all about. Um, thanks, we did have about six or seven individuals come to, uh, a meeting last week, and, uh, we just spent, I think, about two hours, we spent two hours here talking about school finance and, and kind of state of the state a little bit, as it relates to big picture stuff, not the details uh, of us, we did talk about some of those too as well, so we'll get into a lot of these different things. First of all, our goal always focuses around our mission statement, which is to, um, continue to high level academics, academic achievement, personal growth, and inspiring curiosity, that is really truly the focus of what it is we're doing. Uh, we want to demonstrate, obviously, the fiscal responsibility, maintain our learning environments, and ultimately take care of and maintain the largest investment in our community, which is our school, uh, both schools there too as well, so again, uh, we just want to support kids, we want to support our staff, and support our community all at the same time. So again, we've been at this for a while, May twenty twenty four, we're presenting today, this presentation was presented to the finance committee back in April as well, and it was part of the April board package, so, uh, nothing really super new that we're gonna be presenting, we, these things have already been looked at. But I want to highlight September and October, September and October are the two really big months for school finance, because that's when we get our variables. The third Friday count, we are funded by the number of students who attend, that is our revenue formula, and then ultimately, who pays for that is basically tied to how much property value the district has. And so, at the beginning of October, the state says this is how property rich your district is. And then, on the fifteenth, then the state says, okay, this is how much money we are going to pay for, um, the revenue limit. Okay, so, um, September is another trap again, obviously, as we get going throughout this school year, by September twelfth, I think we have a really, really good idea about how many students are in our school. Right, so, um, that annual meeting is really important, because then we will refine it again. And then ultimately, in October, the board would approve the tax levy, uh, from that standpoint too as well. So, um, budget factors, the best part about this budget is that we know what the budget is for next year, so we know what the state had given us, it is three hundred twenty five dollar increase per pupil. If you rewind a year ago, we sat here, we're like, we really don't know what we're gonna have, because it's my annual budget. I'm gonna fast forward a year from now and tell you, I will say, we really don't have an idea what it is, because nothing moves too fast in NAS, and it's related to the twenty five percent set budget. Well, we have a three hundred twenty five dollar increase per student, again, remember that we are funded by the number of students that we have, and that all goes into our revenue limit formula. Um, salary increases, okay, um, approximately four point six six percent dollars, and that is basically a three percent increase to salaries and hourly wages, and then a thousand dollar retention bonus, uh, which you will see coming up here a little bit later too as well for our support staff. Health insurance. Twelve and a half percent increase is what we're looking at, okay? Um, hopefully it comes in a little bit less than that, uh, this past year, we moved to a calendar year, and we have a max rate cap of twenty five percent effective January first, so hence, we are anticipating a twelve and a half percent increase to health insurance premiums. Um, health insurance is a whole other issue facing, I don't know, just school districts, but regular businesses with the cost of care continuing to rise, and that's continuing to mean things is sad. Um, transportation increases, supplies, and then ultimately CPI came in at four point one two. Um, basically, it's kind of a big driver for, you know, those increases that we take, we'll get kind of general supplies and electric and all this, while we heard that, you know, we had to be mighty jacked and stuff up twenty percent, whatever it is in the next couple of years, that's real for us too, so. Um, so lots of things, uh, unknown enrollment, okay, that's one of the things that, uh, that, that we continue to, Mr. Kent and I were talking about it today, is that's really one of the bigger unknowns, obviously, we're a growing school district, um, you saw in the board packet that we had twenty families who are opening rolling out of our district, who have never stepped foot in our schools, um, those are families who just moved into the district. So, it's, so that, even though it goes down the revenue limit, it's, again, the revenue limit, they did, we get about thirty six hundred dollars per child who moves in. Yet, we're gonna send about nine thousand out to that resident district, so, um, there's a lot of big factors that come with that enrollment, uh, not all students, obviously, have revenue limit in our books here in the, uh, in our schools. Uh, and then the biggest one is just the reality of loss of ESSR dollars, uh, and EBIS, evidence-based instructional strategies as well as get kids started, or get kids ahead grant for the state of Wisconsin. Um, and last year on our books was approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of those grant eligible expenses, so. We gotta make that up somewhere, it's, again, it's just something that we, we, we use as part of our revenue limit, so. So those are some of the big factors, obviously, there's a lot of little micro stuff, but that's going to be the big picture. Um, so projects we have, our curriculum, uh, which we'll be bringing here to the board this evening, so. Hundred fifty thousand dollar implementation possibly, Act twenty, again, that is a, Act twenty, if you've been following along, something we have to do. This curriculum meets that requirement, but it's something that we have to do to meet that there. Um, we know we're replacing rooftops, we've got some boiler things coming up here, pumps, um, these are all one-time purchases, that if we can't fit them into our budget, um, we will be, uh, using our fund forty one or fund forty six. Now, the, uh, for instance, the bathroom partitions, we already took care of that, check that box, that was completed in April, and we were able to have some surplus dollars from this year. Let's do a one-time purchase on that, um, be able to take care of that, so, so there's something, we're gonna continue to make sure that we maintain all of our facilities. You'll see, this is probably the latest construction year we've ever had in the last five. So, playground projects, no interior remodeling, it's, it's gonna be a great summer for, for our custodial team to do some things too, but, but again, nothing is going to give, again, our, our, our budget is not stopping us from making sure that we continue to maintain our facilities at a really high level. Alright. One of the biggest pieces that I wanted to highlight here is obviously our revenue limit. The revenue limit is how much we can spend truly from a standpoint of how much money we have, and it also controls the pieces of the pies about what the taxpayers pay for and what the state pays for. So, very simple, the biggest thing is, as you can see, our three-year average, and they don't take a snapshot of one year, they take a three-year rolling average. And when you have, when you're a growing school district, that third year or that previous past three years, that one is always kind of the lowest, so when you replace a low number with a high number, your average goes up significantly. We are looking at basically almost a thirty FTE increase from one year to the next from last year, which means the revenue limit is gonna go up. A year ago at this time, in October, actually, I should say, our final budget for the twenty three, twenty four, we moved up by thirty seven students on that three-year rolling average, so, thirty seven one year, thirty this year, that's a significant difference within two years, that's sixty seven students. Now, again, not all students come in and sit in our schools, but on the revenue limit, that's where it goes. So, we got our resident, our price per pupil, which this upcoming year, the proposal is eleven thousand three hundred twenty five dollars. We don't have any of these recurring exemptions, those are for declining enrollment, we're not declining, so those are gone. Equals your revenue limit authority in your fund him. Which is approximately ten million one hundred eighty five dollars, I will tell you that will change. Hundred percent, hundred percent, that's not gonna be it, but right now, as we're planning, we're planning a conservative, and by the way, this is conservative, this is increase of ten um, of a slight increase, obviously, to ten million. Okay, that's the revenue limit, so, in theory, we have approximately ten million one hundred dollars to begin to think about spending. Now, there's two buckets that this comes from. Majority of it can come from the state aid, which is what the state gives us, and then we have the local property taxpayers. Okay, very important to keep those two in mind. Now, state aid, first of all, comes from state, and the state's goal is to fund two-thirds of the funding of the schools in the state of Wisconsin, across the entire state. Not every school district is treated equally. Okay, um, there's been proposals the last, oh, about four years ago, where we're just like, hey, every child gets the same amount of money from the state, no matter if you live in Burton, Brightlander, Ashland, Wausau, you get the same number. That's not the way it works now. The way it works now is, is the value of the state aid comes from the amount of property you have. Okay, so you can imagine in that formula, where schools that got zero state aid, because they are very rich in property, uh, swallow is one of those school districts, Monaco, Lando Lakes, Northern Pines. You don't think that holy cow, people are just rolling in the dough up in the northern part of the state, but they're very property rich because they have a lot of lakes. Okay, so, the funding formula for them, they're like, hey, we get no state aid, boy, we'd love to, we would love to. But unfortunately, it is what it is for us, so, you can see how our community continues to grow in property wealth. More farm fields turned into subdivisions. A farm field has basically zero tax impact. Compared to a subdivision with thirty homes, and you know what those homes are valued for over here. So all of a sudden, that all gets the property rolls from the district, which means the state of Wisconsin is looking at the school district of Burton, saying, you can pay more of the bill. Now, when you pay more of the bill on the property taxpayers, can your revenue limit goes up? Hence the reason why the levy is impacted, and we'll talk about that in a second. Again, we talked about, you know, low state equals H aid, we're gonna get lower this upcoming year. We're just under four billion dollars. Last year, we got just under four billion dollars, so I increased it just a little bit, knowing, again, just trying to be conservative so we're, we don't get this big tax bill shot when we see it a little bit later. So, remember, we had ten million one hundred eighty five thousand dollars to work with? You minus state aid at right around three point eight million, the rest of it has to come from our local tax levy or the property taxes. So that is what the district would then collect for property taxes. Okay? So, tax levy, very early estimates, again, very early estimates in two big buckets, show you how much it changes here, uh, based on equalization aid, we need six point two five three billion, the early mill rate is right around three point six, three dollars and sixty cents per thousand. Okay? Um, what that means, again, and all based on the levy, property values, and things like that, so I can't tell you how much your property tax bill is going to be impacted on. Last year, we were at three point four seven. You don't multiply thirteen cents by the number of thousands that you have, that's not how it works, okay, because we have to wait for the formula to digest across the entire property in the district. Okay, so it's very difficult for me to say what everybody's property taxes are gonna go up, but we know what the early no rate is, is three point sixty cents. Okay, now, this is, oh, a year ago, we were here, this was our September. I showed this because a year ago, we were anticipating forty one percent tax levy and thirty eight percent equalization aid. Hey, pretty close. Pretty close numbers. This upcoming year, fifty one to thirty one. See how the gap is widening, and how the state is saying, Burton, you're becoming more property rich, you need to take on more of the burden. So that's why I show a year ago, where it was forty one, thirty eight, now we're talking about fifty one, thirty one. And as we know, how more basements are coming in, I don't see that gap shrinking anytime soon. Um, if you go back to the mid twenty fifteen's, it was almost fifty fifty, really close relationship, and actually, there was a couple of years, we got more state aid than we did property tax or tax them. It shocked me, we're like, okay, we'll take it, we will certainly take it. So, when we talk about early revenue estimates, obviously, we've got tax levies, equalization aid, um, state revenues, you know, any grants per pupil, categorical aids uh, that we may get, and then obviously, there's some over enrollment dollars there too as well, uh, from, uh, from the revenue sample, too, so. So lots of different things going on there with that. Um, expenses, uh, yeah, this is where we're gonna ask the board to kind of consider this, it's all in that big spreadsheet document, is, as you can see, we are almost sixty, sixty one percent, almost two-thirds people. People, salaries and benefits, and I will tell you, this benefit aspect continues to grow faster than any bucket that we have. And you add twelve, twenty, twelve point five percent increase, um, we've done some healthcare changes already, big thank you to our staff, with the narrow networks, working with some different, uh, broker, and we're gonna continue the education side, but that is one of the bigger threats in the school district right now is our healthcare, that's how we continue to afford it. So you'll see, we will propose a balanced budget, um, without the facilities, again, we'll, we'll continue to refine that, but my goal is obviously to really try to present a balanced budget in October. Uh, once we have all of the formulas there and things like that. So, let's find where we're at. So, same, like, we're balanced, as of April, again, feel very confident with what it is that we're proposing, no big build facility projects or anything, um. Anything that we need to, we need one-time purchases, because, by the way, all of our reoccurring maintenances, like, we're gonna be resurfacing our floor again at the intermediate school, that's all built into our budget, that annual maintenance is all built into the budget. What's not built into the budget is, is, oh, we need new floors covered. Oh, we need new floors covered. Okay, that's who we have some fund balance for. Be able to do that, but I feel really, really good about where we're at, uh, and. And compared to what you hear in the newspaper and things like that around some of the other local school districts and some of their struggles. Um, fund balance. Again, we're gonna have our audit coming up here, but a year ago, again, fund balance is very, very strong. We're about thirty six, thirty seven percent. Again, fund balance is not just money that we're sitting on. Uh, fund balance is for cash flow. To allow us to pay our bills. Um, we're different than a home. We don't get monthly paychecks. We don't get paid on the fifteenth and the thirtieth of the month. Um, we get paid a few times throughout the year. So having that cash flow stops us from short term borrowing, which is great. But ultimately allows us to do certain things if we have to. You know, we talked about opportunities. If our community continues to grow. We would be able to handle all of that internal, whether reconstruction or internal growth, to do some things without going referent. We're able to to control what it is that we can do through using our fund balances. Now that fund balance for fund ten is truly liquid. It truly is liquid. It is invested. Um, what I will tell you, obviously, interest rates are good right now. Um, so obviously, we're making money on that too as well. Fund forty one and forty six are facility only. Uh, funds that are used. When we say facility only, you can't use those on teacher salaries. We can't hire uh new interventions. We can't. You know, boy, we have a transportation issue. We need, you know, we can sub that out. It truly is more bricks and mortar. For remodels, uh, things that break. Stuff like that. So, um, we're in really, really healthy fiscal shape. Really, so you won't hear us in the news about that as well. So we're really proud about some of these that we can make too. So. So I'm kind of opening up to questions for the board if anybody had any questions or anything.
Uh, revenue limit versus the revenue estimates.
Sure.
You explain that.
Sure.
Revenue limit was higher than the revenue.
Correct. Yeah, so the revenue limit also includes voucher. Also includes the voucher. Proper. So that's why it's a little bit higher. Those are dollars that uh as private schools, they can apply to be part of the voucher program. That goes on top of the revenue limit. It doesn't take any money away from the school district. But it's, we call it kind of the voucher tax because it goes on to the revenue limit. Yep, so that's why there's that discrepancy, about a hundred eighty thousand.
As our, uh. That sixty student increase that you talked about.
Yeah.
Last two years, but our overall student count in the last years is flat. Flat getting to. Your higher revenue limit that we can raise for student count.
But our student count is flat. Correct. Yeah, and our open enrollment dollars are higher. So there's some of that deficit right there as well too. So yeah, but uh.
And we're gonna see that jump again. Next year.
Absolutely. Absolutely against the realm. Yeah, exactly. Well, because again, we have. When we say bucks and seats, I'm gonna say bucks and seats. That's a it's kind of a term that everybody ever sees. That number hasn't changed the last several years. And we don't anticipate it being too much greater or less than what it is, because we literally are. Ten students less than we were about a year ago. And our projection, right now, if we were to start school again, we don't know how many new students are coming through. We don't really say necessarily enrollment. It's gonna be fairly the same. Yes, the difference is all those other inflationary costs we need to go up. But yeah, correct.
That's the funds.
Well, we spent every penny, every penny, every penny for it. That would have been all exhausted this school year. Yep. And then the printer fifty thousand.
So that would increase for us or out of that, sir?
Correct, but that's something we want to keep in mind. Well, it was a year ago, we spent two hundred thousand dollars on our math curriculum and on our literacy curriculum. So that's what we use there, got those dollars for. So when we think about, we're gonna need new curriculum this year. So that's why we we've had to add, you know, an additional. You know, or the counselor, we're gonna get to start ahead, so there was some special education costs too that. Bar, we have to do. Three hundred fifty thousand. Reaggress, yeah. Correct, yeah, correct. But we used it just to kind of offset some expenses that we knew we were gonna be able to in the future. But yes. We didn't use it to maintain operations. Yeah, with that, we didn't do. I mean, you could. I mean, there's a lot of school districts around. That use it to maintain operations, and that's where they kind of went through it real early. Whereas extending extra dollars Maria for three years, he paid extra dollars for three years.
Yes.
Approximately three years, and we let, we made sure that that stretched out for three years. So we stretched it. Yep.
Yep, that just for clarity, remember twenty five dollar annual increases. That is one hundred percent.
A hundred percent of local taxpayer. Thank you for bringing that up. A year ago, the state of Wisconsin said you can raise your revenue limit. Per pupil member from ten thousand to eleven thousand. Was a thousand dollars. It was the biggest increase ever. But the state legislator said. That will be going on to your property taxpayers, so your tax levy is that will be a local decision. To be able to do that. So same way too, the three hundred twenty five this year would go completely onto the levy. There is no state aid. Coming in the form of property tax for me, I'm thirty seven other budgets. Yep. So just right there is, say you have eight hundred students next three twenty five. You're looking at about a, you know, three hundred thousand dollar increase to the levy before you open your doors. Yeah. Yep. Accurate. That's another factor about by the levy as well. Thanks for creating that. Yeah, that's huge.
And then net dollars, year over year, new dollars that we see.
Net dollars, make a year from. This year's new dollars is right around six hundred thousand dollars approximately. So what we're budgeting for new dollar, when you take a look at. The growth of the district, the increase to the revenue limit plus. The additional three hundred twenty five. So it'd be right around six hundred thousand dollars for a new one. And. That's where I showed it where we have new money versus. Nope, nope, that's where we go right around here. So we have new money. I presented this last week, so I love that. So our new money is approximately six hundred thousand dollars. Yet these increases right here, four point six, and this property cap or the the health insurance, all of these increases. Are approximately one point four million dollars. So we had to find, and we found eight hundred thousand dollars of reductions. In the budget from last year to this year.
Mostly.
Projects, facilities, well, four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
What's that? Nope, that's still it. That's still there. Yep, that's there because I stayed in there. It would have been um. Approximately four hundred thousand dollars in facility projects. Uh, fifty thousand in fund forty one at this time. And then we also had some reductions in staffing. Uh, as well, and then just some efficiencies as to both there is reductions there too. Yep, uh, shopping around all of our property casualty insurance business like that. Yep. Thank you for bringing that up. But yeah, new money is six hundred. Versus new expenses above. Thank you. Steve, we got that ready.
Right, Ron. So we need inspection on that one, right?
Yes, please. So, um, in the board packet, we have a preliminary. Revenue limit, which ultimately highlights bottom ten that you talked about, and then there's a proposed preliminary charter. And this is truly just to get us going through the year. Um, the board will appear again from the community in September for the annual meeting. The only thing that happens with the school budget at the annual meeting is we set fund forty one. Dollars to sell, if that's the case. After that, it's up to the board to, you know, they'll they'll listen every end of October when you then finalize the question. So there's looking for uh the board to. Motion to approve the preliminary twenty four twenty five budget as presented. So much.
A second. All right, so a motion and a second. Uh, so we got the twenty four twenty five proposed budget. We have any further discussion?
They even. They recommending right now utilizing full revenue authority given our. You give our factors ever look.
Sure, that's right.
Right, uh, recommending taxing.
Taxing.
So you need the eleven thousand three hundred twenty five, three hundred twenty five dollar per pupil. Yeah.
Do you know what maybe I have anything you wanna add?
Well, the. The I should get to it and change it. And and immediately, they should go back and have to not to. Bet the match. If they're concerned about higher than higher tax.
Right, this is just for preliminary.
Preliminary, and then they gain point, they can ask the board to lower the levy by under levy. Uh, just off the taxpayer. You'll have more, you'll have more information at that time too as well, so.
And no matter which way you slice it. Regardless, probably all equalizes extra.
Taxes are going.
Taxes are going.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All right, uh, so we're looking to take a vote on approving the adopting the twenty twenty four twenty five proposed budget. All in favor, say yes.
Yes. No.
What was that, Dean?
I did, yeah.
All opposed, say no?
No.
All right, motion carries, three yeses, one no.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to discussion about creating the consent agenda for serving.
Uh, again, uh, we brought up at the last meeting and I guess our administration has no concern about it. It's something that may school districts do. Uh, we brought it to the board as well. At any point, a board member can pull out a single. A get a single item, whatever would be considered consent agenda, they're then discussing at any point, so. And it all is presenting in the back, so it's like it's. I mean, we could operate very similar to kind of the way it was today. There may one motion to say, hey. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Um, first and the second. Then the board member can remove item or discuss. You can discuss anything at that time and then uh you move on. So. It's just kind of as a more efficient way to can do normal work.
Okay, looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
And you can just tell, you can tell.
Well, this has a discussion that you need to discuss.
Yep.
Tori, you brought it. So we're we're looking at. What would be part of our consent agenda?
It would be minutes, it would be the general report, it would be. So mission thing.
Everything else is still discussed.
And you know, you could. Correct, we'll have to be voting about that. Correct, yeah, yeah. It would be normal business for personnel actions, and we always move all administrative contracts to. Even like the letters of appointment this evening, we haven't brought those forward as personnel actions or the next separate action.
Yeah, I'm for it.
We can start with that and then see where we want to go, but uh if you guys are fine with it, then I'll just create the appropriate agenda.
I'm I'm fine with it. Uh, I think the. I didn't. Get away from uh. Uh, transparency. I think we. The time that it takes to uh. Go through the normal business of the school is uh. It seems from thinking that we're railroading things through. So, but it's a dual award.
So Dean, what part would you consider not transparent, considering you can pull out any item you would like to discuss at any time?
I had to show like the method. I don't. I every meeting I could could do that, to pull everything out. Uh, so it would, you know, one person could can check. Uh, the way it's set up and uh. But uh, I it to me, it's just.
All right, I'm on a fair.
So like the world war. So all of the W S B and make sure that the agenda is pretty and God was still open place. Okay, sure, thanks. Okay.
Very good. All right, discussion around creating a uh once full board email address for communication to the board.
So Justin brought this to me, uh, due to the board to talk about. And uh, again, it's. A lot of school districts, we have, uh, we go to their school board page and things Jim, he's got a phone like working on this. Is, uh, when you go to the school board page and click on to, you know, communicate with the entire board, say something like that. You click there and uh or it showcases an email that would be murd school board. Uh, at murd dot K twelve. It would go to that email box and then it gets forwarded individually to each of the board members. So it's uh, so everybody gets the same communication as you use that email. Um, when you respond, you will be responding from your own individual female team as well. So it actually creates an. Creates an avenue where it avoids a walking forum and, you know, somebody says. Emails Nicole and says, hey, I want to talk about this. And she accidentally has reply all, you know, all of a sudden we got in this format, it didn't work that way. Each individual board member will still have their own email uh that they will be responding to and things like that. It just is just a little like it said, an easy way for uh community member or staff members, anyone. To communicate with the entire board instead of. Either typing in five addresses or selecting five addresses. This way, you can everybody on the look easier. Doesn't stop anybody from still emailing joy, anybody else. So it's something that we can do is ready to roll with it. We've done all the investigations. And uh, this is a world of order. We certainly can make that happen. Certainly get her.
Yeah, I brought it forward. I think you simplified everybody's public to just give a one email address and not worry about. Typing it in wrong or forgetting somebody or whoever, uh, this is what he's on the board to pass and like. I've been thinking shocker, forgotten somebody, so.
Or like a silly.
That email I got. Right, right, so. Very, so, so, uh, it seems like the world of war will get that hold of Dean. Anything, any concerns that you're in?
Uh, I understand. I was it was explained to board and uh as long as it uh. Doesn't create any issues towards the walk and so. Or like.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Sorry, helps, helps, less certainly. If people use that.
Yeah, correct. Yes, and it's not like you have to. You can send email to the board members.
Correct. I think it would list both. Our 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 plan was to list both of them, uh, because if they didn't have two email.
My Justin. That would respond.
Yeah.
Dean?
What? I didn't hear clearly. What change are you looking for?
Troy would like just the, we'll call it shared. Uh.
The joint email.
Going school board email for communication to us only through the online listed on the school website.
Instead of the joint email as well as our individual.
Why do you not want the community to have our email?
So. Board members can't be picked and chosen, so everybody's there now.
Don't you use just.
So the leaders, yeah. I'd give examples that happened last year.
I'm okay with.
That but that's taking. Community members. Individual rights to it.
Paying a member in the number of war.
But if. A a community member only want. To communicate. To individuals. Shouldn't they still have that right to do that?
First, I think the email is ethical.
Yes, we're talking about listing on a website, though not eliminating the use of personal email.
No, I think what Troy's asking is just not even to be listed publicly on there.
I think that would be a separate discussion.
And I think there could be a, you know, see how this goes and again, maybe. The the goal is, I understand the goal is, um, if it still continues to kind of, you know, email a certain number of board members, not everybody. That's something that the board can always take a look at.
All right, I say we give a shot.
Give a shot, two emails. Okay, all right.
With both.
We both, yeah, so we will post your individual emails as well as, you know, please reach out to the board. Here in the E conference. We need to realize that's true as well. And as soon as that's up, it will uh, that will get rolled and we'll take that out to our community.
That was a test.
So.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to. Alright, moving on to the purchase of a new intermediate school boiler and primary school boiler pumps.
So, uh, again, thank you very much to uh, Norman Zercher. He's uh, he's back and making this guy, take this person to uh, put their thought level to work with these contractors, so. Um, we brought this forward to the facility team and uh, and continue to investigate and what we have in front of you is basically three proposals. Uh, for what's just going to use the boiler first and uh, it's basically all three contractors. Amazingly, did the same boiler, so it's interesting when Jordan and I were at the uh, this uh, a lossful convention. We were telling everybody about the boiler, I knew about that, that's one more look I have to, so it must be, you know, the, the newest. And uh, one of the better products out there, uh, who probably will come out and walk in, this is what they're putting their schools through as well, right, this thing, so. Um, like the packet says, I can ultimately, we do have three phases and we are looking to kind of phase out our third phase, which is from nineteen sixty eight. Um, which is very old and very big, and but that would barely use operates at any time. Um, but uh, looking to replace our first stage boiler with a brand new uh, state of the art. And that can can handle, uh, obviously the entire building, the nice part is that we can work with focus on energy and the proposals you see are approximately ninety thousand dollars. And to get them back, we're to move forward, focus on energy plus a check for approximately eleven thousand seven hundred eighty eight dollars, uh, just to. Install this, which more than the project to, you know, that seventy eight, seventy nine thousand dollars, which is significant, so. Um, that's one of the reasons why we're looking at this is because we really feel that we can get a high efficiency boiler that we can save some dollars on. While at the same time, uh, you know, making sure that the building still operates at a very high level. As well, so that's going to be the uh, the boiler situation, Jordan, did I miss anything?
No, I just wanted to say around set up a meeting with focus on energy back in March. Um, they came out and did an energy analysis of the whole district, we looked at lighting, scheduling, our automation system. And then we ended up moving down to the boiler room where all the energy is, so. Um, I talked to him about possibly replacing our high efficient boiler with a newer one. And they saw the nineteen sixty eight Kewaunee sitting there and said, you can maximize your rebates by getting rid of that one and putting it here. And using the one you have currently running as your backup. So we ended up doing a two million B two boiler replacement of a thirty three mil, or a. Three point three million B two boiler, so we're dropping down in BTUs and we're gaining a lot of efficiency. We're going from about seventy five percent efficiency to ninety six point one, so. It's a huge jump and uh, it's got a twenty to one turn down rate on the boiler. So uh, focus on energy has given us quite a bit of money to do this project, so. Thanks, if you have any questions, I can answer them too, but.
So my only question is, it says in the quote that the control, I understand state local tasks. Um, but the controls programming, do we have any idea of what that additional cost is going to be?
So there's already programming in place for the boiler system right now, it's basically just a few minor changes, we were going to do time and material with the automation company on there. That was.
So a thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars?
Programming under a thousand.
Thank you.
Alright, looking for a motion, um, for the primary school boiler and primary school water pumps. So.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, uh, for the purchase of the intermediate school boiler and primary school water pumps. Discussion.
I had a chance, um, Jordan actually took me out to work. I believe you guys kind of done it.
Right, I got, I got.
So, um.
Falls out there?
We need to change the program. So, yeah, it's, it's. We need, yeah, especially after lots of looking at all, and it would be a basically again, comfort for health and. So.
And if it pay back with the efficiency we're, we're getting.
Yeah, this is going to be our primary boiler now and our backup now will be high efficient, whether than the Columbia, which isn't talked about really. Um, I think it's mentioned in the packet as a second stage boiler, but um. That boiler's not very efficient either, so no, that'll be our emergency backup if we have issues, so. Yep.
We like that.
But we haven't had to use the backup, the backup.
No, not in my ten years.
I've been in a lot of board rooms, does it very well when you can. Boiler, I guess, should be well, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, big thank you to Jordan, these pumps, again, we may name them as long as we can, you know, they, they back a good one. So, big thank you, our primary schools along the. Little high tech, yeah, which is a larger system.
Okay, so I hear you. Pretty impressive, pretty impressive, so. Alright, Dean for the discussion. Alright, uh, so the purchase of the new intermediate school boiler and primary school boiler pumps, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yay.
All opposed say no? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, moving on to the final review of the proposed new K three five English language arts curriculum.
So as presented at the student achievement meeting, um, in April, it was the first read for the board back in April as well. Um, you tell there is the litigation from our administrative team as well as our literacy team, we've worked on that, thank you Maria for leading that charge. Uh, again, we're just looking for uh, the board to make a motion to approve the five fifth grade, we all a curriculum and.
Second. We're looking a second to approve the K three five English language arts curriculum as presented. Any discussion? So Ryan, you can add exchange.
Yep.
Back for today.
Yep.
Um, so a couple of things, we're going to have to align with the, the litigation that's kind of out there with Act twenty, that's been going on. Is that going to have any impact if something doesn't go through the way this curriculum is going to cover us? Regardless what happens in the state house. Yeah?
Yes, um, I mean, even if you, this is not on their shortlist of four approved curriculums, um. At this point in time, um, what the DPI has is rubrics that are in the responsibility of the school districts to fill out and submit. Um, part of Act twenty requires annual reporting, so the most recent communication is that those rubrics and that communication will be happening. With our required annual reporting, along with our percentage of students that have personal reading plans and a whole bunch of other stuff.
So there's no risk, we think of that saying, no, we have to use one of these for.
Absolutely not, the law was very clear that these are recommended lists, not required.
The argument is around fifty million dollars and how this relates to who controls it, yeah, and we're.
Last things go.
Those say that's something different, that's, you know.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, I, I don't know what manner we've been doing.
Yeah, right, and then uh. The twelve thousand dollar should be.
I know. Yeah, we all have our.
And all through, pardon us from Justin, I was talking to Maria, the first time she took a look at the book, she said, it's crazy. How much shipping is, I mean, there was even with our, we covered the one program two as well. I told, I told Maria literally, I said, alright, we'll get aim the truck and frame it, so you can drive to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania and go pick it up.
Jordan, it's.
Not a lot of shipping, I mean.
So I guess, I mean, shipping.
Whatever they want. It's, it's not a district problem, this is.
Yeah, I mean, actually, to be honest, Savis is kind of, well, I think they're running about eight percent, sometimes you get anywhere. Yeah, sometimes you get as much as like, kind of fifteen percent on that, um, you know, but. It is, I would say Savis has thrown in almost a hundred thousand dollars at least by their determining. Of free things, so take that for what it is, um, you know, which helps, but yeah, they don't, there's no negotiation, just not shipping. Right?
And that is, that's, that's for, yeah, for five years of shipping, that's at twelve thousand dollars or whatever is for five years of shipping. It equates to about four dollars a child per year. For a lot of work, most of shipping. Um, it would be a uh, a tractor trailer and uh, it was a pallet, it's all pallets, it's all pallets, sure, perhaps. Uh, we've forelifted off more than likely, or they've got a, the changes that they dropped and would be forfeited.
Also the cost.
Yeah.
The workbooks can be changed every year by that, correct, it's not forgetting the same workbook.
Oh, no, if they do anything in particular, like in there, we can change how many amounts, so flex class sizes, let's say again. Eighty can there this year and I need a hundred the next, that doesn't.
No, but the book we get next year, the book we get the year after that could be slightly different content and so.
No, this will be their twenty twenty five version, so this is the most updated, we don't even have every finalized copy. Of that, but that will be for the five years, the copyright twenty twenty five will be shipped.
Shipped to us each year.
Yes. Yep.
It's a lot of it, it's a hundred and fifty.
Oh, yes.
Hundred fifty one.
I had sticker shock, I mean, but it's. Um, our six eight resource is the same company with the same, it's kind of the same version, but up here and um. Uh, finding good success with that as well, um, and that we did with the six year payment plan. Um, so these will expire at the same time, um, looking at materials or resources at the same time, so it, that parallels nicely. We're already writing curriculum, to be honest, and we aren't using everything that's coming in that workbook or in that program. We're gonna make it good for.
No doubt about that.
Yes.
And then in five years. Right, that's an entire. Primary school education of a, of a child, that's our obvious, persons like the cost is prohibited to buy less than that for.
Well, what I would say, again, what I would say is, is the, again, we can giggle at the free stuff, but that free stuff is teacher materials, student supplemental material, community grants or whatever it is. Um, that's the things that you get for free when you go longer. Or because if you're going to give a one year commitment, um, they don't want to give you free professional belt, free teacher materials and stuff like that too as well, so. Um, we feel that it's going to take two, three years for the even kids to factor to see, you know, outside of student engagement, for the month, things that our staff says. But um, again, if we feel like we need to pivot, you're free and you're for, you know, we're, we're looking at, because that dollars have already been invested. So it would be a ship of thirty thousand dollars. Which, again, I would say that we can do with this right.
Okay.
It's never asking, I mean, but I feel very confident in the work that we did with the rubric and frankly, we didn't have the six eight here with the companion. You know, but we're having a lot of success.
The last two great ones you paid for. I know these, that's your funds you said.
The math curriculum and the six eight curriculum we're paying for, for the un, last year, the six eight. Literacy program is like, it's the Savis, so it's, it's this program, we already prepaid all of that, so we're good. The math program has a reoccurring cost every year. That's a different.
And we know one, it's the math curriculum, do we give five years on that as well?
No, we're paying, well, math is a little different because it's, it's something called an open educational resource, an O E R. Um, which means that we're working with a vendor who actually, you know, made it into teacher manuals and workbooks instead of. Printing it off, so it works very differently, it also tends to be cheaper because there's no development cost, because it was um, developed. Um, through federal grants in most cases that allowed it to be an open resource. So we are just paying the reoccurring workbook fee for that. Partly because the five and six year uh, numbers on it always were well into a quarter of a million dollars, they did not give us a break because it's an open. O E R to give us a big discount if we went farther out, so there was no advantage for us to do that. Um, last year, which is why we didn't.
Alright, any other discussion? Okay, um. Let's see, we are looking to approve the proposed K three five English language arts curriculum. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, thank you for your contributions with that, because I know that's something that we've been talking about for long.
Uh, there's a very great team behind me, goodness.
And team.
Okay, next is the first draft, uh, review of the proposed five minute series policies. Uh, base coverage as a health and safety measure that was sent back to House.
So, yeah, this will be the first read, uh, for those, again, the, thank you to Nicole Troy for, you know, walking through all those, but again, these, the five minute series and carry, he leaves. Pretty straightforward stuff. But yeah, just if there's anything that you can talk about it now, or if there's something that you want to talk about, we'll reach out, please help for. What would the committee that was due, so, and you talked a little bit about that base covering. Option, thank you, Alex.
Alright. No action. Right, it was just discussion, so. Uh, discussion on that, the base covering, just to be clear, it states in there that the school board or the administration can. Require us.
Correct, during the school day.
Follow state, local, county.
Correct, yep.
Buses are separate because the bus company makes their own decision.
The flexibility is federally handed to do whatever.
Alright. Okay, uh, moving forward to, oh, sorry, another discussion around policies. Uh, moving forward to the final review of the proposed district library media plan.
So we uh, presented that to the student achievement meeting, it was in the board package back. Also, the administration's requiring the board make motion to approve the district's library media frame as presented.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the proposed district library media plan as presented, any discussion? Staffing for the library, it's next two years are. Same, I say it, same as that. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the proposed district library media plan as presented, say yes?
Yes.
Yes? All opposed say no? Which carries?
Thank you, uh, Maria, Jim.
Alright, moving forward to the discussion of person who's looking forward, looking about Troy and both divisions.
So you'll see the uh, recommendations from the administrative team and what did come through with the policy committed to as well. Comments or, like, is this like a policy that there's something that you want to talk more about? Yeah, and then you kind of, yeah, employee handbook, it can be updated, it can be a first read and a second read. Uh, it just always have to happen, you know. In June, we approve it. What's the role, the robotics? Yeah, so that was, we were, we will hopefully bring that to you, so it's a whole club, now we're, we're hoping that it's hopefully that I gear too, so, yep, it's a new club. Mr. Wagner is uh, is running that, uh, we had. Fifteen kids, Steve, or ten? Or did, yeah.
You mean fifteen to twenty?
Fifteen to twenty kids, we're uh, again, it's just kind of a new after school club. Uh, it's just kind of introductory, right now, it's not your first Lego League, competitions, things like that. It's truly just an extension from some of the work that is happening during our, our, you lack the open, some of the parts more stuff to kind of give kids a little bit better opportunity. It is Lego League, first Lego League robotics focused without the crazy competitions or things like that too as well, so. Um, we're really excited because we also have a new summer school class that's starting, uh, the sublimity, I believe it's two to three hours. Um, during our June and July sessions too as well, so that sold out just like that, great, so. Who wears it? Who wears it?
We had, who wear uh?
Allows, just a little, yeah. A hundred and fifty.
Okay. Uh, are they good?
Yeah.
Alright, moving forward to the approval of the twenty four, twenty five letters of.
So, like, just like you highlighted before, these are all of our um, support staff who we would like to welcome back for next year. Um, and you will see that in the spreadsheet that in increased, ask for basically a general increase of three percent uh, to the hourly wages. And then also, like we talked about with uh, teachers and then a thousand dollar retention laws to be added there too as well, so. Um, I do want to, and obviously there's, there's some adjustments that were made there too, and we're going to just want to clarify that uh. The, Aiden Russ does have a recommendation there and that did come from Jordan and Mr. Kurtis as well, and it was not part of that recommendation for Aiden Russ. For, for that movement of that basis as well, so. So yeah, so the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the twenty four, twenty five letters of appointments as presented.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, letters of appointment with twenty four, twenty five school year. As presented, we have in discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approving the twenty four, twenty five letters of appointment, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed say no. Motion carries. Very much. All right, we're moving forward to the exciting topic for the building technology, the. Intermediate school little theater.
Yeah, so, thank you very much, Mr. Vinnie, for, uh, leading that charge and working with all sorts of vendors, and again, we heard from the school board, we heard from our community. Strategic planning, or, you know, for, for, I'd say, but to, so, what you will see is basically a brand new sound system, video system too as well. For our little theater, and you see the quote has several microphones, one for each board member, superintendent, as well as a community member, so. Anyone would like to speak, we can, you know, either, and you can decide a podium, have a podium, and then come on and address the board. Um, again, to make sure that everything gets caught of that, uh, audio part too, so. Uh, you'll see three votes there, and we are recommending that input board be the, uh. The, uh, the choice here for the, uh, project, so. The administration recommends the board make a motion to approve the proposed book to replace audio video equipment in the little theater for intra court, as presented.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second to approve the purchase of new technology for the intermediate school theater. Discussion. So, we talked a little bit, but, um, the lowest, the lowest quote was also in European. The best.
Yeah. Um, I just felt the, the solution that they came in and looked at this room and provided, gave us, it, uh, it literally did give us. More microphones, more technology, um, and better way to grab the sound from up in front of the room than anybody else did. So, um, I was. Yeah, sure. So, currently, everybody at home's gonna hear me really loud, cause I'm right next to the camera, okay? Um, moving forward, what'll happen is, I'll have a direct plug into a microphone system, which only grabs. The audio from the mics that are up by you guys, or the community one. So it grabs that audio right from you guys, rather than back here trying to grab it from up there. Um, so it's a lot more reliant on your voices into the mic, rather than the audio in the room. Um, and, you know, we looked at different types of mic, lapel mics, those type of mics. And, um, everybody gave it their best shot, but info cord, they definitely. Hit one out of the park with this one, with what we're getting, so.
Something that is used every day, that again, is still, that's very beneficial.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm just, I'm all for it, especially with the choir, if it was just for us, I would probably vote against it, but. Twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money, especially when we're just talking about preliminary budgets and other things, it's just unnecessary, so.
We've heard, from what I've heard, this is one of the biggest concerns, we talk about from a facility standpoint, is the technology for our board meetings. Um, obviously, Janice Roden does a fantastic job of what she has.
Yeah.
Um, Steve uses this area quite a bit too as well, so it will be utilized for many different multi functions, community use, us, kids. Um, I, I recommend that we, we get it done, it's been a while. It's been.
Um.
Seven years?
No, it's been long enough, um, what I had seen on the original quotes, it was two thousand nine. That's way before my time even, so.
So this year's dollar, next year's dollar?
Um, it'll have to be next year's dollars, because I think we'll be able to get her in for this fiscal before June.
By now.
We have about, whatever, we will earmark dollars from this year's budget for this project, so. If we can, if we can get it in this fiscal year, that would be great, we would love to be able to.
Yeah, I'll find out all the shipping and everything, cause this room doesn't, doesn't use first commerce.
Materials here, if they can, if we did some part of it, we need to be between four budget now.
Okay, all right, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, so if we do the vote on approving, uh, the purchase of new technology for intermediate school little theater. All those in favor say yes, yes.
Yeah.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, moving forward to open enrollment student approvals and wait lists.
Yeah, so, um, wanted to, uh, again, you'll see the number back in, let's remind us, back in January, the board had to set. Uh, the number of seats, given enrollment factor and things like that, as we know at that. Um, you'll see in the chart about what the board did set, uh, those recommendations. Um, when we take a look at all of the applications to, uh, come into our school district, again, an application doesn't mean you are coming. It means you can apply up to three school districts, and, uh, and we don't know if they've applied to one, two, or three. Um, in our recommendation, uh, you will see that, uh, there are two open enrollment seats. That, uh, we're, I'm asking the board to consider approving that we set zero for numbers. In particular, I'd like to highlight first grade, first grade is at zero seats, and yet one person applied. Becoming. Uh, same thing in fifth grade. Same thing in fifth grade, so we have one person applied for fifth grade and one person applied for first grade. They are the only applicants for those grades, uh, I feel one student we can handle in the open enrollment process, uh. Moving forward, uh, hence the reason for my recommendation to approve all of our students who are open enrollment in, who do not carry this bulletin order or an I E D. So, that's where that change of recommendation is, they can look at our numbers now, and since it's one. Then we don't have to create a waitlist or, etc., so, that's where that recommendation.
So looking for a motion to approve open enrollment student approvals and wait lists.
Motion to approve all open enrollment applications not incoming with an expulsion order or an I E D.
As we are. So, enrollment student approvals, I just, without expulsion order for I E D, any discussion?
We would not create, there would be no way, just, just no doubt, everyone is accepted, this is final. That would be the final, um, any alternate open enrollment apps, if there is, if there's no space on, for instance, for first or fourth, or. Or fifth grade or fourth grade, for instance, we would not be accepting any alternative open enrollment apps for those. Um, four Ks unlimited, they would be able to.
I don't know, these students are.
Correct, correct, yeah, no, it's not siblings, so, Nicole's, uh, motion would be submission in one second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, I need to vote on, uh, the open enrollment student approvals and wait lists for s- students. With, uh, in, what, we have a first grader and a fifth grader with no expulsion order. We just have it, which is.
The whole, there is everything, but all.
Yeah, open enrollment, to approve student approvals, waitlist for, uh, all students without I Ps or expulsion. All voters say yes.
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 All opposed say no. Motion carries.
I do need the board to make one more motion, it's important, uh, the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve all students who have applied out of the urban community school district.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to approve, uh, all students that have, like, out, out to urban community school district. Uh, any discussion? So, we, uh, we have. Six students currently attending our schools. That are open.
That are open enrollment, yep, for reported families, so. Yep, we'll reach out to them. Yeah, it's not yet.
General procedure for that, we just.
On email and, uh, personal conversation.
Yep.
Some family shares.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, we're going to vote on, uh. Hope we can also, this would apply to auto-mercy school district, all those favors say yes, yes. All opposed say no. She carries. All right. New policy approval and old policy deletion, five hundred series policy that the first we then did at the. Made money of, for me. Uh, April.
That's not correct.
Oh, that's not correct.
Oh, they need to pay.
Yes.
Yep.
So, new policy approval, this is the last situation, the five hundred series policies that returns.
Yeah, we need a motion before I read.
We got, yes.
Motion to approve policy five eleven, equal opportunity employment and non discrimination. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the board for its consideration and action.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve, uh, the policy five eleven, equal opportunity employment and non discrimination. That has been recommended by policy committee, provided the board for consideration action, all favors say, sorry, extended. All favors say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five eleven R, equal opportunity employment, non discrimination rule. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five eleven R, equal opportunity employment, non discrimination rule. That is presented, uh, has been recommended by the policy committee, presented to the full board for its consideration and action, some discussion. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five eleven E, complaint form to report employment discrimination, harassment, or workplace bullying. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Good motion, a second to approve policy five eleven E, complaint form, report employment discrimination, harassment, or workplace bullying. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? Discussion, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five zero one four, replace with policy five twelve, employee harassment based on a legally protected status. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion, second to delete policy five thousand fourteen, and replace with policy five hundred twelve, reporting harassment based on legally protected status. That has been first, uh, recommended by the policy committee and provided for board for consideration and action, any discussion? All those in favor say yes, yes. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty one, employee communication and lines of responsibility. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Motion in a second to approve policy five five one, employee communication and lines of responsibility that has been recommended by the policy committee. Have provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
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 Yeah.
All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five thousand fifteen and replace policy five hundred and twenty two, employee code of conduct. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action. That's what was given here, though, and replaced with, okay, reset. Motion to delete policy five thousand fifteen and replace with policy five hundred and twenty two. Employee code of conduct that has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
All right, we have a motion in a second to delete policy five thousand fifteen, replace with policy five hundred twenty two, employee code of conduct. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty two point one, alcohol and drug free workplace. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five twenty two point one, alcohol and drug free workplace. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes, yes. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty two point two, employee use of tobacco, nicotine, and related products. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five twenty two point two, employee use of tobacco, nicotine, and related products. That has been recommended by the policy committee, provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty two point three, workplace violence, threats, intimidation, and harassment. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five twenty two point three, workplace violence, threats, intimidation, and harassment. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five thousand sixteen and replace with policy five hundred and twenty two point four. Employee ethics in conflict of interest that have been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to delete policy five thousand sixteen and replace with policy five twenty two point four, employee ethics in conflict of interest. That has been recommended by the policy committee, provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty two point five, employee involvement and political activities. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five twenty two point five, employee involvement, political activities. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all, all opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy seven thousand fifty point three and replace with policy five hundred and twenty two point six. Employee technology used in policy five twenty two point six R. Employee technology and communication resource is ruled. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to delete policy seven thousand fifty point three and replace with policy five twenty two point six, employee technology use. And policy five twenty two point six R, employee technology and communication resource, resource rule. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes.
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 Yeah.
All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty two point seven, employee use of mobile phones and other data devices. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five twenty two point seven, employee use of mobile phones and other data devices. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes, yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty two point eight, employee possession slash use of weapons. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five twenty two point eight, employee possession. Such use of weapons that has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty three point one, employee health examinations that have been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five twenty three point one, employee health examinations that has been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty three point two, employee alcohol and drug testing that has been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We had a motion in a second to approve policy five twenty three point two, employee alcohol, drug testing. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes, yes.
Yeah.
All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty three point three, employee assistance program. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five twenty three point three, employee assistance program. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
All opposed, say no? Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty four, employee access opportunities that has been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five twenty four, employee access opportunities that have been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action, any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
All opposed, say no? Motion carries.
Last one. Motion to approve policy five hundred and twenty five, employee solicitations that have been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Motion in a second to approve policy five forty five, employee solicitations that have been recommended by the policy committee. And provided the full board for its consideration and actions, any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Motion carries. Alright, thank you for all, appreciate that very much. Alright, future meeting agenda items?
Yep, so we got the June seventeenth, um the. If you will see that we've got a few things there, we've got strategic plan, personal addit, um then minimizing employee handbook. And oh, five hundred series and base coverage. So June seventeenth would not be preferred.
You have a date in mind?
Yeah, close section four, it's for the ass, make sure.
July eighth, second? August, are we trying to set today?
If we follow our goal, we'll be harvested.
Yeah.
But we, we're supposed to, the twenty seventh is our district open. I mean, we can go a week before, it would make no difference to me.
August nineteenth, we're previewing?
Yeah, I could think that was going to let me.
Say that.
August eighteenth is whatever.
Okay.
Say that. Correct, any other additional?
For motions adjourned. Return me, all in favor say yes?
Yeah.
Yes? All opposed, no?